Welcome to the November 5th, 2025 School Committee Meeting, 6:00 PM, City Council Chamber. Please join me in salute and flag. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Diane Clark, please call the roll.
Mr. Lay.
Here.
Ms. Martin. Mia Rourke.
Here.
Mr. Bahu.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Mr. Rossi.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
One absent, six present.
Thank you. And this evening, Mr. Bahu, we're joined by...
Yes, we're joined by our new student senator.
Seven present.
Devaney...
Devaney Hane.
Devaney Hane. So she just got elected, and we're grateful to have her here.
Thank you for having me.
Oh, wow.
Will you get your own plaque?
Very nice. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I've got a special order of business, 3.1, spotlight on excellence, Washington Elementary School, the school of recognition for 2025. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a really nice item to share with the school committee. We have a gem of a school in the Washington School, and under the leadership of Mr. Jeff Haynes, who has been principal there for the last three years, and his wonderful staff, they have made great progress, enough that the Department of Education has recognized them. They literally called the school of recognition for their wonderful progress in student achievement over the last couple of years. I'd like to have Mr. Haynes greet you and his staff.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to say thank you for having us. We are greatly honored to be here. I'd like to introduce my staff, Mrs. Jen Plunkett, Mrs. Kate Hugo, and Mrs. Diane Cahill.
Welcome.
So, we would just like to say thank you. This honor goes to the entire school community. We have some representatives here, but this is a truly collective effort. Our team really strives to put students first, to make sure that we are looking at student data, and making sure we're meeting kids where they're at and helping them grow. And that has truly happened over my time at the Washington, but it's a testament to the staff that I was grateful to inherit. They truly, again, it's students first, it's a, you know, a true team effort from teachers, professionals, support staff. It's really, really a team effort. And the kids are really instrumental in the whole process as well. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Superintendent, anything else? Good to go.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Section four minutes, 4.1, approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled Lowell School Committee meeting of October 15th, 2025, motion approved by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay, also fair say I, opposed motion passes. Section five, permission to enter 5.1, November 5th, 2025, motion approved by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Questions or comments? We'll call him, Alan Clark.
Mr. Lay.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Seven yes.
We want six memorials. We have four this evening. 6.1, Brian Richard Yaden, husband of retired Jane Campbell Evaluation Team Chip Person in Special Education. 6.2, Ms. Molly Sheehy, mother of Anne Sheehy, technology teacher at the STEM Academy. 6.3, Ruth Ann Dite, mother of Bonnie Rose Pine Arts Teacher. And 6.4, Mary Mian Conaval, sister of Pawtucket Memorial Memorial Librarian, Maureen Mian, retired teachers Kathy Mian Bailey and Colleen Turco, and president of UMass Lowell, Marty Mian, aunt of Amanda Farley and Katie Bernia, cousins of Erin Mian and Caitlin Urban. Alan Clark, please, Dr. Lunt Chamber. With our rest in peace. Moving on, section seven, motion, 7.1, by Mr. Lay, Mr. Bahu, ask the superintendent to research on creating a second or more STEM schools, and whether that would better serve students at the Robinson and other middle schools. No second needed. Mr. Bahu or Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we do have a STEM, I noticed that we already have a STEM middle school, but I also think that in the future, we want to be able to somehow specialize and maybe give a little attention to the STEM program. So, I noticed that, you know, sometimes, I don't want to say one school is better than another, but there are some schools who are more popular and one school is less popular. And I wonder if superintendent can think of a way to make the schools that are less popular maybe become a little bit more popular. And I thought maybe perhaps a STEM program could be something that attracts more students. So, I did have this conversation with my colleague, and Mr. Bahu was a big supporter of the program, and he wants to consider this motion together with me. So, Mr. Bahu wants to add to what we talked about.
Mr. Bahu?
Sure. Through you to the superintendent. How many STEM schools do we currently have?
We have just, so, a smart elegant answer would be to say they're all STEM schools, right? But we have one school named a STEM Academy, and so, you know, so there's one themed school, just one.
Is the Pine Arts considered a STEM school as well?
No, the Pine Arts is another themed school. It has a, but it's the arts that's their theme.
Sure. We know that ultimately, the Rogers STEM is a highly sought-after school, has over, I believe, close to 1,000 students, and ultimately, it's a different type and a beneficial type of education for those 1,000 students. And I know that, you know, we generally need a K through eight to be a STEM school. So, I mean, if we could consider a campus across the river, because ultimately, you know, everything needs to sort of come over to this side of the river, and if you want to go to a STEM school and you live on the other side, as I'm speaking to Devaney over here right now, she used to be a Pawtucket Memorial student, and she lived out by the Maury School. So she was getting bust back and forth, and I asked her how that worked. And she said, you know, it sort of, you know, took time away from myself. So it would be nice if we could offer a STEM campus, whether it would be at the Pawtucket Memorial and the Wing, or at the McCalliff and possibly the Robinson, or someplace on the other side of the river, which would make students and families sort of be engaged and not have to ultimately be traveling to one side of the river and the other, which would sort of limit transportation, which we always have an issue with. So it would be great if you looked into this, to see if this is feasible to go ahead and consider.
Mr. Bahu and Mr. Lay and the school committees, I think it's a very fine idea, and I'm delighted to have the opportunity to research it and come back to the committee with what we find.
Mr. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would just like, you know, just in terms of some of the history of how the STEM Academy came to be, you know, it was actually a motion I had made, and it came out of some very, I think, productive conversations that were part of our ongoing curriculum subcommittees at the time. And we were having ongoing conversations about how to redeploy. We were just, at that point, taking back over the Rogers School. It had been functioning as an administration building. And it was seen really as an opportunity to kind of launch this new idea of a STEM, at the time, elementary school. That was the whole concept, that it was going to be an elementary school, and it was going to feed to the Stocklosa, which was the newest school in the district that had been set up with, you know, science labs, and it was, you know, kind of a natural, would have been a natural feeder. So it really was this idea of trying to build a system where you'd have your elementary school feeding into your middle school. I do think that the popularity, certainly, of the STEM tells us that we made some good choices, so that's good. And I would absolutely support the idea of trying to move forward to expand those options. I would say, the idea of a standalone as a middle school, I'm not, I don't find it as compelling as if we could build a campus system with, you know, obviously, the Robinson lends itself with the Mc Avenue right, I'm sorry, the McCalliff right there. So you really could build those, again, what we had originally envisioned, which was the elementary that would feed right into the, right into the middle school. So I think as you're kind of looking at this, it would give us a chance to take two schools that I think would really benefit from some added time and attention, and I think could really, you know, as theme schools, could really, I think, take this opportunity and really make the most of it. So, I certainly support the motion. I guess I would love to see it expand a little more.
Thank you.
Also fair say I, opposed motion passes. 7.2, Mr. Bahu, a motion to schedule a joint meeting of the Lowell School Committee Finance Subcommittee and City Council Finance Subcommittee to discuss maintenance of efforts charges, maintenance of effort agreement, which has not been updated since 2011, and ongoing efforts to work in a timely fashion to collaboratively develop a plan to address MOE changes throughout the school year, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Mr. Bahu?
Sure. So, I mean, ultimately, this is something that's been ongoing conversation with the school administration itself. The city council is aware of it. It's the way we get funding in the form of free cash from the city. There has been an agreement that was, you know, updated 15 years ago, or 14 years ago, in 2011. It was originally written in 2007. So it would be nice if we could go ahead and start to have an open discussion with the city council, to see if there's some things that maybe they may want to add into it, or, you know, or we may want to add or remove. And then finally, as our finance director, Mr. Pinto, has been working with the city management, and ultimately, you know, to have an ongoing understanding of what the maintenance looks like, you know, periodically throughout the school year. So if we could just all get on the same page, I think it would be a great way, a great direction for us to benefit from it and not have this be in the front page of the newspaper regularly.
Also fair say I, opposed motion passes. 7.3, Ms. Dougherty, request superintendent for the committee with the annual list of the district's major facility concerns for the committee to review and prioritize before submitting to the city, seconded by Ms. Martin. Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you. I'd like to ask that we strike two words from my motion, and that would be in the third line where it says "and prioritize." After giving it some thought and talking to some different people, that, those two words could impact our timeliness of being able to move forward. My intention with this motion is to, and I leave it up to the administration to determine the best time for doing this, but to have an annual time that the school committee receives information about what the school administration is thinking are priority, major facility work that needs to be done, that we're going to be requesting the city to focus on for the following year. So I don't know what time of year that would be best. I'll leave that up to you, superintendent. But I do want it to be an annual event that the school committee has then made aware of that, those list of priority building concerns, so that we can discuss it, of course, I won't be here myself, so that you can discuss it, and it becomes a public document. So our community knows where are the areas of concern in our neighborhood schools that need to be addressed, and what are we asking for the city in terms of, as being the landlord, to maintain those buildings. So I would, I'm open to any thoughts from the superintendent about how to approach this. I'm leaving it pretty loose, because I want you to do, you know, figure out something that works well for the administration and for this committee, but as a way to make sure that we're all on the same page about what are the primary concerns with our buildings. Thank you.
Also fair say I, opposed motion passes. Moving on, 7.4, motion by Mr. Lay, Mr. Conway, to request a report for the superintendent regarding the present and prospective status of the high school show choir. No second needed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, it has been a couple of times when community members, parents, staff who of the, of the school, of the, in Lowell, who are very favor of a show choir, and sometimes they don't know what's going on. So this motion is pretty much to ask the superintendent a report, so that those who have concern on the show choir can have a peace of mind, understanding the current status of the show choir, and whether we still continue to have it in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think that there was, you know, some concerns about the show choir, and I think that, you know, when we take a look at show choir, or whether it's another type of activity after school, or sports and so forth, the fact is that there are certain groups of kids that gravitate to, to certain things. And as far as the show choir, we want to make sure that, that, you know, if we can even enhance that program, if at all possible, because again, I think there's a lot of kids that really enjoy that. The staff enjoys it, the public. And again, I think that if we could just review that and take a look at it and see if there's any ways that we might be able to enhance that going forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Also fair say I, opposed motion passes. Moving on, 7.5, Mr. Lay, request a new academic building at Lowell High School located at the corner of Arcane Drive and Father Morrisette Boulevard, in the honor of late Senator Edward J. Kennedy, seconded by Ms. Martin. Mr. Lay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as the motion is written, I think the new academic building at the high school, where the former fieldhouse used to be, now is a brand-new building. It has no name given yet, and I talked to several community members who have, knows a lot about the city, and they think that it is fair to have it named, and Senator Kennedy is the name that they agree to accept. So I want to put this as a motion, and I will let my colleague decide what, whether they want to support. And, well, actually, I'd like to ask for everyone to support on this. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Conway?
Yeah, just, just very briefly, I think it's a good idea, and I, I know that the Senator, I worked with him on the, on the city council, and obviously, very dedicated to the city, and, and certainly to the, to the high school, too. And I think that it would be very fitting if we did be able to name a portion of that, of the new high school after him, because again, you put a lot of effort and energy into that. So, again, I totally support this motion on it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I would say, as my colleagues have stated, I would certainly support the motion overall as well. I will say that we do generally have a procedure in place for naming opportunities, where the mayor creates an ad hoc naming subcommittee that can then accept kind of an official nomination, whether from the family, or it could be from Mr. Lay himself. I believe there's a form that exists that can be filled out, and then that goes to that subcommittee, and then comes to the full committee for review. And I think that there are, you know, a number of, of naming opportunities. So I think that it makes sense that if we do this first one this way, then at least we have a process in place that will make sense over the, over the long haul.
Motion by Ms. Martin.
Move to...
Ad hoc subcommittee, naming subcommittee, seconded by Mr. Conway. Also fair say I, opposed motion passes. Look forward to the report. Moving on to section eight, subcommittees, 8.1, the approval of the minutes of the Policy and Government Subcommittee meeting, October 15th, 2025. Chairwoman Dougherty.
Thank you. Yes, the policy subcommittee met on Tuesday, October 15th. President were myself, my committee members, Mr. Conway and Ms. Del Rossi, as well as Dr. Hall from the administration, and Ms. Mallon from the Mass Association of School Committees. Our focus of this meeting was section E, for recommended approval and changes, where we looked at making some minor grammatical changes, removing some sections, and updating other sections. We are also still waiting on certain sections that are being reviewed by the law office, I believe, as well as our school finance department. But that was generally the results of that meeting. We'll be bringing them all forward at the end for full committee approval. I don't know if there was anything else to add, or if Dr. Hall has an update. Have we heard back from the law office or anything?
I believe what was pending, Ms. Dougherty, is we were staffing it through our finance department and the city's finance department. That appears to be complete, and there was no objection from the city.
Okay. All right. So I would submit that as a report of progress.
Excellent. Motion accepted. So, Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Rossi. Also fair say I, I'm sorry, Mr. Bahu, go ahead.
Yeah, I know, Ms. Dougherty, you've been working on this for, seems like, over two years. And I'm curious, what percentage of the policy manual has been completed?
So that's tricky, because we didn't go in order. So they're alphabetical, we're on E, which means we've got up to E done, but we also did some other areas. What we have done is, in the last meeting or two, we've really refined the process, so that Dr. Hall, working with the MAS C representative, they go through everything, and then when we actually meet as a committee, we're making much quicker progress. Hoping we can schedule another one for November, and at that time, I'll be able to give you a better update of how far, you know, how far through we are, what's left.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know this has been a big undertaking, so thanks for doing it, and let's see how much of it we can complete, and then move on and complete it wholly at some point. Thank you.
Moving on, 8.2, approval of the minutes of the Human Resources and Labor Relations Subcommittee meeting of October 21st, 2025. Chairwoman Martin.
So the, the Human Resources and Labor Relations Subcommittee did meet on October 21st. Present from the subcommittee were myself, Mr. Conway, and Ms. Dougherty, and we also had from the administration Superintendent Skinner, Dr. Hall, and Ms. Brown Legrand to answer questions. It was a very brief meeting, I am happy to report. We basically were just reviewing the current organizational chart at central office, and some of those central office positions. The committee did have a few directed questions on specific, you know, questions around, you know, supervising of guidance counselors and translators, but for the most part, we really just reviewed the, the current chart, determined that certainly at this point, it's, we're not in a position where we want to be making or, you know, recommending any kind of changes. But I do think we were very clear that we do recognize that coming into the next budget season, we could be in a very different circumstance, and wanting to ensure that the superintendent is certainly aware of that, and making any preparations that he can, so that we recognize when we do enter into the budget, we need to be prepared for what new budget realities we may be facing. So I would submit that as a report of progress. A short report for a short meeting.
Goodbye, Mr. Conway. Also fair say I, opposed motion passes. 8.3, the approval of minutes of the School and City Facility Subcommittee meeting, October 28th, 2025. Chairwoman Dougherty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet with our colleagues on the council regarding the facilities. We had a number of items that we discussed that night, and I think, you know, you have your minutes in front of you, but I want to just point out a couple of things that I don't think were clear in the minutes. You should have also received a printout of some photos of the Bartlett School parking lot, because that was one of the items that we discussed. And as my colleagues know, we've had a number of people from the Bartlett come and talk to us over the last six months about conditions at the school. I personally have been advocating for a lot of improvements at the school. I think it took years, but we did finally get lockers for the school. So these pictures were sent to me over the weekend of the condition of the Bartlett parking lot, because one of the points of discussion was, we had been told at past meetings that the Bartlett parking lot was on schedule, was scheduled to be replaced, or repaved, or whatever the correct whatever the correct word is. Meanwhile, the Bailey Daley got repaved, the Riley Sullivan got repaved. And I can tell you, I'm no, by no means a paving expert, but I have been to those schools and they, prior to the paving issue, they were nowhere near the condition that we see at the Bartlett. And as this was discussed with the joint facilities, what I heard from the city, and actually, I heard from our own Mr. Underwood, is that it's expensive. There's retaining wall issues that need to be addressed. There's very tight space because of the neighborhood. It's in a very dense area of the city, so they're not going to be able to expand the parking spaces. And I guess I just want to point out that if you are the landlord, you don't get to say it's too expensive to fix it. You are required by law to provide a safe and appropriate environment for our children to learn. That is the city's responsibility. And to keep pushing this down the road, I mean, there have been a number of improvements the city has made on its properties, and I'd be the first one to commend them for that, and a number of ways that they've been able to tap into the state school building fund. And I think that's a good way to go, definitely. But just because you can't get state money to do it, doesn't mean you can keep pushing that can down the road. I don't know if the superintendent can tell me off the top of his head, I meant to look it up and I forgot. How many students do we have at the Bartlett School, ballpark? How many staff do we have working there?
Roughly five hundred.
Five hundred students? And how many staff?
Roughly fifty.
Fifty. And not to mention the parents, the community members who are also involved with the school. I think any, and you can look, this should be on the website, I didn't check to see that, but you can look and see the conditions are appalling at this parking lot. And we have, I pointed out, there's two spots that are supposedly for accessibility, handicap accessibility. The signage is not great. But if you go to the school and you need to use a ramp, so let's say you park in a handicap accessible spot, and there's a ramp that'll take you to a side door, it only has a code entry. There's no doorbell to have somebody let you in. So a staff person can use it, if you're a staff person who has mobility issues. But a person who is a parent trying to park to get their child or to pick up their child, and the front door also has a ramp, but that ramp also does not lead to a doorbell that can let you, that somebody can know. You'd have to call the school, hey, I'm outside, you know, it's just, it's an issue of fairness. It comes right down to that. And I will tell you, and I have said this on the floor before, and I get emotional every time I think about it, the day I was at the Bartlett School for a civics event and an eighth-grade student, I said, anybody have anything they want to share or tell me about how we can do our job better? And this young eighth-grade boy said to me, can you tell me why our school doesn't look like the other schools I visit? Our school doesn't look like the Sullivan or the Wang or the Daley. And we know we have issues in other schools, too. I'm not saying that they're Taj Mahals, but they don't have parking lots like this. And yet we spend money repaving parking lots that are not as bad. So I don't know, I mean, I understand there's concerns because it's an older building, but again, that is not acceptable. It's not an acceptable excuse. And the last thing I'm going to end with, because I know I'm going on a rage, and if anybody else wants to add, there were other things we talked about. The city is still very interested in us giving over our facilities work to come under their control. We had one counselor who mentioned quite stridently that they're losing money by not doing that. I'm not sure how, and I, we still have yet to see any details. What are we going to get if we do this? Are we going to get dedicated plumbers? Are we going to get dedicated elevator operators? What are we going to get by abdicating the control, the little control we have over our building, the little check and balances over our buildings? The last thing I want to say is, regarding our maintenance of effort, which I know we've been working to collaborate better with the city on that, the state of Massachusetts has said that Lowell is required to contribute sixty-eight million dollars currently, right? That's for this fiscal year, to educate our students. Sixty-eight million. The city proposed to give us ten million of that in cash, as you all know. Last year, they gave us fourteen million. So we had to go and, you picked the word, advocate, fight. I felt a little bit like it was grovelling before the council to say, hey, how can you give us ten million? How is that going to pay for curriculum? How is that going to pay for salaries? When eighteen years ago, we were getting twenty-five million. I know, because that's when I ran. You know, it was more than that. It was two thousand three, twenty-two years ago. So you're going to give us very little in cash, twelve million after we groveled, out of the sixty-eight million that you're supposed to be contributing? Please, please, invest in the facilities, in the schools and the schoolyards and the parking and the handicap accessibility that our students and our families and our staff deserve and have a right to by law. So that's my report on the Facilities Subcommittee Meeting.
All in fairness, AI, opposed motion passes. I'm sorry, by Ms. Dougherty.
I just want to add.
Please do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to commend Ms. Dougherty for saying what you just, what you just said. I echo what you said. The Bartlett School has definitely, when you drive by, you could tell, it's not somewhere that you want to hang out at. So if we could at least have the parking lot paved, that would be wonderful. It's a good start. Thank you.
Mr. Bahu?
As discussed at the facilities meeting, yes, the parking lot is costing a lot of money. They did indicate they were looking to reasphalt a sixty-eight-hundred-square-foot area, and that is, I believe, in the budget, and I'm sure that was a discussion. So just something to, you know, that was brought up, and it wasn't in the minutes. And lastly, you know, to, you know, the superintendent, yes, handicapped accessibility is something that needs to be taken care of. So could we go ahead and speak to Mr. Underwood to go ahead and get the doorbells replaced so that students and parents are able to go ahead and go in in their wheelchairs? Because unfortunately, we do have many students with, that are in wheelchairs that shouldn't be going from one door to the other. We know how large that campus is, we know how the stairs can be, and it's not very feasible for them to be going in any other direction except for the door that's accessible. And lastly, to repaint the handicapped logos at those schools as well, because ultimately, they are faded. I have been there, and I was there about a year ago, and they were faded then. I'm sure it's gotten much worse. So if we could address that, I'm sure we can work on the parking lot to make it, you know, in all fairness to all other schools. So, but I think those two could probably get taken care of pretty quickly.
Certainly. Certainly. Thank you.
Moving on, Section Nine, reports of the superintendent, nine point one, response of motion by Mr. Conway on September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, regarding asbestos inspection and awareness training. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the report from Rick Underwood and Dr. Hall in regards to the asbestos awareness training. And it's good to see that all the senior custodians have now completed the awareness training course. So I think that that's a, that's a great step forward. And I think also what it's showing is that the school department and the city are working hand-in-hand in conjunction to make sure that we're going to have a safe school over there in regards to the asbestos. And, you know, let's face it, our students and our staff, they certainly, they deserve that, needless to say. And when parents send their children off to school, they want to make sure that the school is as safe as possible. So again, I think this is a great step and to see and join, joining the city and the school department, working together to make this a safer place. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Nine point two, motion response by Ms. Del Rossi on July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, regarding Bartlett PTO. Ms. Del Rossi?
Thank you so much for this response, Ms. Krakauer-Berg. I love to see the structure and the planning to get more parents out and involved. I'm just wondering, how did the event on October twenty-fifth go? And how, how many core parents do you have in regards to it? Because I knew that was the issue, like the, getting the engagement.
Thank you, Ms. Del Rossi. So we, our folks at the Bartlett Middle School, Bartlett Community Partnership Schools, current active PTO are out busy recruiting. They had a table, they had a lot of interest. Their next PTO meeting has not happened yet for the month of November, but I'd be happy to update you after to see how many more members we get to attend following that recruitment effort.
Thank you very much. It looks like it's well-structured, and parents will have a lot of opportunity to plan to be there and help out. So thank you.
Report to superintendent, nine point three, motion by Ms. Dougherty on October first, two thousand twenty-five, regarding school elevators and classroom lifts at the Bartlett School.
Thank you. Thank you for this report. I'm happy to see that they are telling us now the chair lifts will be done, I guess it's in four weeks. So I wonder if we could just, for our first meeting in December, get confirmation of that, that that's actually happened. And I think it's important to note, we really don't have a plan. I asked directly what could be the plan, and they talked about trying to keep better maintenance and things like that. The reality is, those chair lifts have been broken for several years. That's my understanding, several years. And that they were told it was, they were going to be fixed over the summer. I mean, it's just an ongoing thing, so I don't know. I guess we'll just, let's get a report that they got them fixed, and then maybe we could ask for a maintenance schedule. If that's part of the problem, they said one thing to do, their solution to my question is, the DPW suggested the best way to address this going forward is to continue to monitor, inspect the elevators as required. It's really, you know, but I am hopeful that it'll be done for December. Thank you.
Moving on, nine point four, response to motion by Mr. Conway, October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, regarding tennis courts and backboards at Shed Park. Mr. Conway?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Hall. Appreciate the report, and I'm looking forward to the final assessment on what we can actually do there. And my recommendation is, you know, this, this is the, where Lowell High School plays their tennis matches. And we have a number of different schools that come and take a look at this, and it is kind of embarrassing if you've gone out there to take a look at it. I mean, I can't believe some of those holes in there. So obviously, something has to be done. And again, I highly recommend, I highly recommend that, that when they come up with their assessment and what to do, that they include the coaches. Because the coaches, they understand how those courts are, they understand, they, I'm sure that they have coached them, they've played for many, many years. So I think that it would be important to tap into their knowledge base that certainly can help make sure that we can come up with the best tennis courts for our, for our kids. I think they certainly deserve it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Moving on, nine point five, F four twenty-six, quarter one summary report. Questions, comments, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was about to say what you just said, that the committee members, the report is in your pocket, and Dr. Pinto is here to take any questions you might have.
Moving on, nine point six, personnel report. Excellent. Need a motion to accept the reports of the superintendent, nine point one through nine point six, as reports of progress, by Ms. Del Rossi, seconded by Mr. Bahu. All in fairness, AI, opposed motion passes. Nine point seven, home education, motion to approve home ed by Mr. Lay, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Roll call, my clerk.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Ten, new business, ten point one, request to accept donation from Robinson Middle School, accepted donation of one thousand dollars by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Ten point three, budget modification request, motion to approve budget modification of six thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Rossi. Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Ten point four, request for authorization to pay prior-year invoices. Is that what column now, Dr. Pinto? Motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay. Roll call.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Approve four thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars.
Excuse me? Yes?
I approve.
Yes. Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Ten point five, request for approval of disposable, disposal of surplus vehicles, motion approved by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Eleven, convention conference requests. We have three this evening. Bundle, take all three. Eleven point one, out-of-state travel, Lowell High School Winter Guide International to New Jersey. Eleven point two, out-of-state travel request, Lowell High School Winter Guide International to Dayton, Ohio. Eleven point three, out-of-state overnight request, AASPA two thousand twenty-six HR Conference, motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Roll call.
We have registered speakers.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
For eleven point one and eleven point two, Jared Logan is going to address them.
Hello. I just wanted to quickly talk on these two items. My name is Jared Logan. I am the band director at Lowell High School. And I would first like to thank the committee, because last year, you approved the same trip that we went on in April, and I never got the chance. So thank you very much. Last year, bringing our percussion ensemble to compete on the national stage has had a ripple effect across our program. After seeing the top high school performers from the country, this is the first time that students were excited about marching band and to go and compete and perform in the four years that I've been here, which is really awesome. They worked harder at rehearsal, they spent more time practicing at home, and they wouldn't stop talking about the amazing groups that they now aspire to be like. In an effort to continue this growth of the program, I'd like to continue having this trip for our top performing instrumental music ensemble. For reference, last year, there were over two hundred ensembles that performed across eight divisions. We earned a finalist spot, and we finished in sixth place, which was really awesome. I also want to explain that the reason for the two trips, last year, we were able to compete in a regional that was hosted in Dartmouth, Massachusetts. Unfortunately, this year, the closest regional is in New Jersey, so we'd have to go out to New Jersey to then make, to be able to attend the Ohio trip. So now we have to do two separate trips for that. I appreciate your time, and thank you for letting me speak today. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Roll call, my clerk.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Section twelve, communications, twelve point one, postpone commencement of classes at Lowell High School on January fifth, two thousand twenty-five, motion to accept the communication by Mr. Lay, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi. Roll call.
No.
Roll call. All in fairness, AI, opposed motion passes. Section thirteen, professional personnel, members of the UTL hereby donate nine sick leave days to Jared Gothia, Laura Lee, school teacher, and sixty sick leave days to Amy Morris, Bartlett Community Partnership School teacher, motion to approve by Mr. Lay, seconded by Mr. Conway. Roll call.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke? Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Have a good evening.